For the next item, I have an update for the board from our HCPS Health Committee, and Dr. Tigan is prepared to come forward and provide us that update, as is tradition, which will focus on the work of the committee and provide an overview of local health conditions as they relate to COVID-19. Dr. Tigan.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to provide another update from the HCPS Health Committee. Today's agenda includes the current transmission level for Henrico, an update on the efforts to vaccinate our 5- to 11-year-olds, a change in testing guidance adopted by the CDC previously, but recently adopted by the VDH, and the current distribution of proctored COVID-19 test kits, and an update on the testing of those participating in winter athletics. As normal, I will start with the transmission level. On Monday, the Virginia Department of Health released the most recent health data for Henrico County. The transmission level within Henrico remains at the highest level. Based on the seven-day data from November 28th through December 4th, the number of new cases per 100,000 was up to 188, and the percentage of PCR tests that were positive was 7.1%. Now, let's look at the impact, the school impact. As we begin to look at the level of school impact, last week, there were 134 positive cases and one outbreak in schools. This is triple the number of positive cases, but one-third the number of outbreaks from three weeks ago, when we had 44 cases and three outbreaks. The absentee rate for this year, 6.3%, as compared to 2018-19, remember, which is our standard year of comparison, which was 4.2%, is down. While we have seen that it has been about double, it's actually only about 50% higher at this point. This lower trend has been seen for the past few weeks. And HR, of course, is continuing its efforts to recruit candidates for our schools. The teacher shortage continues, and the lack of substitutes has resulted in a level of strain for our staff. Overall, the level of school impact remains at medium, and the overall status for Henrico County is at substantial transmission. But in order to reduce, and in order to reduce the transmission level, well, let me say, this is at medium, so remember that overall, we're still at high because it's the highest of the two different transmission levels. In order to reduce the transmission level, though, we do continue to focus on our mitigation strategies, and vaccinations is one of these strategies. The current vaccination focus remains on our 5- to 11-year-olds. The Richmond-Henrico Health District held two clinics, held a second clinic at Fairfield Middle School this past Saturday, and they have a second clinic planned for Elko Middle School this Saturday. And while appointments are encouraged, they are not required, and families and children are able to get their first or second dose of the Pfizer vaccine this Saturday at Elko from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Children may also be vaccinated at their local pediatrician or family physician's office or at one of many pharmacies in the area. In addition, through collaboration with the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts, HCPS will pilot offering school-based vaccination clinics during the school day at several of our elementary schools prior to winter break. The pilot schools will be Dumbarton, Glen Lee, Laburnum, and Ridge Elementarys. Only students enrolled at the school will be permitted to participate in these vaccination clinics. And through this program, students can be vaccinated at their home school with parent consent during the school day without the parent required to be present. The VDH or one of their partner pharmacies will administer the vaccines. The clinics will be held on Friday, December 17th, for first doses, and then again on Friday, January 7th, for second doses. Of course, if kids miss on the 17th of December, they can get their first dose on January 7th. The principals have shared this information with their communities, and the principals are working with their family advocates, school nurses, and social workers to reach families who might benefit from this opportunity for their child to be vaccinated while at school. If need be, someone will go to the home to assist families with completing the consent form, and anticipating this question, the consent forms are available in multiple languages. Additional school-based vaccination clinics are being planned for other Title I schools for late January and into February. VDH did recently adopt the CDC testing guidance, which includes people who are identified as close contact and are not fully vaccinated should test immediately after the exposure. If the test results are negative, the person should test again five to seven days after the last exposure. So the big difference is, we had said, you know, wait till day five or seven, but now the suggestion is that they are testing immediately and then again at day five or seven. In addition, obviously, if the results are positive or they're symptomatic, they would be quarantining. In addition, fully vaccinated people with no COVID-19-like symptoms and no known exposure should be excluded from routine screening testing programs. And you will find the VDH update now included on their testing webpage, and I put the link there for anyone who'd like to review it. And as we move on to look at our take-home test kits that we've been giving to our families, we have been continuing to distribute them through the clinics as well as through central office designees. And as you may recall, the schools and offices began this master distribution of kits on Wednesday, October 20th. As of last week, nearly 1,900 kits had been distributed, with almost 90% of those kits going to our students. We are currently monitoring our inventory and expiration dates closely, and we are ordering new test kits to arrive immediately before winter break with expiration dates into 2022. This has been a constant collaboration with the Virginia Department of Health and the school nurses. Robyn Gilbert and Karen Criswell have really worked on making sure that we're ready when school comes, when kids return in January. And next, I would like to provide on the COVID-19, an update on the COVID-19 screening We have been working hand-in-hand with the Virginia Department of Health and our vendor to solidify the schedule for the screening testing at each of our secondary schools. Each school has been assigned a specific day of the week and time slot. Testing currently occurs Monday through Thursday with no testing on Fridays. And we are now in our fourth week of testing at the high school level and in our second week of testing at the middle school level. The first week at each level came with challenges, but routines are being established. We continue to work with our assigned vendor to ensure agreed-upon timelines for test administration are kept to avoid inconveniencing staff and students. Since testing began, the program has identified 23 positive cases of COVID. AEGIS follows quality assurance practices throughout the testing process to ensure accurate results. Standard operating procedures related to the collection of specimens and laboratory testing are maintained, such as the disinfection and sanitation of the workspace prior to and after a collection event with appropriate PPE being utilized, students using hand sanitizer prior to collection of a specimen and after completing that collection process. Anterior narys, a nasal swab, collections are performed by the student under the direct supervision of a trained AEGIS staff member. For processing inside the laboratory, samples are handled individually from entry into the laboratory all the way through testing. Only one sample is handled at a time. When a pool tests non-negative, the original specimen container for each sample in the pool is obtained and processed independently and only handled one at a time. Remember, this was one of the advantages of this particular vendor, was being able to do this double testing, to have results immediately when results came back as to who in a pool would be, might be, was the positive case. AEGIS Labs utilizes a molecular real-time RT-PCR assay manufactured by Thermo Fisher Scientific Incorporated, and it's known as the TacPath COVID-19 Combo Kit. This is considered the gold standard in COVID screening testing, and it is not impacted by the emerging Omicron variant, enabling accurate test results. This is due to the fact that the assay targets three specific regions of the SARS-CoV-2 genome in testing, rather than other labs that use a PCR assay that target fewer specific regions. AEGIS's in-house verification of the performance of the aforementioned assay demonstrated a limit of detection of 0.4 copies of the virus per microliter of sample. This is a very, very specific test. At least two of three targets, with the targets being the N gene, the F gene, and the ORF1AB must be identified with cycle threshold values less than 37 for a positive result to be reported. It is also important to understand that while five individual samples are pulled and tested, if the results are positive for COVID, the five individual samples are run individually to determine the identity of the COVID-positive person or persons, because there could be more than one in a pool that is positive. I know this has been like a biology lesson, and I hope it helps our families and staff better understand more of the specifics of the screening testing program. And at this time, I would be happy to answer questions, but I will say, my background is in chemistry and not biology, so I may have to seek help from an epidemiologist before providing a response.
Well, I was going to ask you, it wasn't your background in science, but you just distinguish which particular...
They are different.
Yeah, got you.
Mine is math-based.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Tigan. I'm going to start to my left with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you for your explanation of that. I know there are some families that are struggling trying to understand, and it's certainly complex. But to simplify it, it's a difference in the way that the lab processes the results. There are some labs that do a more in-depth processing, and so in just very simple terms of, it's a difference in the way that the results are reviewed, analyzed, and processed. Dr. Tigan, I do think that it is helpful to be able to share this information with families in a way that's easily understood, that's easier said than done, but I do think we can perhaps find a way to sort of memorialize it and have a response for families that are encountering the difference between when they get the results back from the testing kits, and then they perhaps go to their physician and get a different result. So just something to explore and think about. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogbon.
Just a quick question. If you could go back to this slide that showed the testing guidance, fully vaccinated people with no COVID-like symptoms and no known exposure should be excluded, and the one that above, is this what's guiding our testing of our winter athletes? I've been asked this question a lot.
It's overall the health of our athletes and students in our schools. This is just additional guidance as far as, I think it's more, this is more responsive to the variance in the amount of time, so that rather than waiting for five to seven days to test, the CDC had recommended previously that they should test immediately. And now with the Omicron variant, the VDH is saying that we do think you need to test immediately and then again.
Again.
And it's, you know, timeframes, but not, this is not specific to...
To the winter.
To the winter athletes.
Well, and just to, if you could explain a little bit, I get a number of questions of our testing of athletes. Why are we not testing them all, is basically the question I get, is, you know, because there are some folks who feel that if you're going to test, you know, it shouldn't matter whether they're vaccinated or not, because you can have a breakthrough infection, but why are we only testing the unvaccinated athlete?
And that is more the second bullet, where they're not, the VDH is not recommending that people that are fully vaccinated and don't have symptoms participate in routine screening.
But for our program, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, your vaccination status doesn't stop you from being able to anticipate.
No.
You were able to opt out if you had the vaccine based on the VDH recommendation.
Right.
But it's open to those who are or are not, and so it is not limited only to those who are unvaccinated.
Well, I mean, there are some people who think that we are only testing unvaccinated students, and I've gotten a number of phone calls in the last week saying that there are some people who feel like they're, for lack of an inappropriately used word, the way they're using it, they're being discriminated against. "I'm being discriminated against because I have chosen not to get the vaccine." I've actually had students say that to me. "I'm still having to get tested, but I've chosen not to get the vaccine, therefore I'm being punished in a way," that kind of thing. And my, you know, I just know that we are following the guidance that has been given us in this and every other area. And so if you could expand on why we're doing the program the way we're doing it and the process of testing our winter athletes, I think we could clarify some of the misinformation.
And I'll note, much with the winter testing program, along with other practices like quarantining, there are some differences in the guidance from VDH depending on vaccination status. For example, whether you'll be asked to quarantine if you're exposed and have been vaccinated, what happens differs based on your vaccination status. And so the same thing with the screening testing, the recommendation is, you know, that if you are vaccinated, you could opt out of that, the risk is lower. But certainly, anyone who wanted to participate regardless of the status could. And so I'll let Dr. Tigan speak again to sort of why, related to the close contact and indoors and that sort of thing.
Absolutely. With winter athletes, you know, that, one, you're indoors, you know, for the fall, the majority of ours were outdoors, and we also didn't have this opportunity to have a vendor that could handle a division our size during the fall. And by the time it became available, we were mid-season, and so we started with the winter where we knew the majority of our athletes are inside and there's, and close contact. And so we wanted to be able to make sure that we were keeping our athletes safe and that, you know, those athletes go into our classrooms and make sure that, you know, student learning is a priority and making sure that that learning can continue.
And so when, have you been asked to explain why we're not testing them all, though? And this honestly surprised me, when I had a number of phone calls just saying, "Well, if you're going to test the winter athletes, you should test them all." What's the response?
Well, and, you know, the...
That's a lot of kids.
Well, we're following the VDH guidance, and so I think it goes back to the reasons why we do different things related to quarantine based on vaccination status, and that does have to do with the guidance we receive from our health partner.
And the guidance is right here.
Right. And, you know, I think this is just one of those times, I know we're hearing from a lot of parents who objected to this, this schedule, it is, it's difficult. We are, I think, like you said just a few minutes ago, you were put in the position of giving us information, and, you know, we're all in the position of having to follow medical guidance, because none of us up here, well, you're a doctor, but a different kind.
Not a medical doctor.
So we're surrounded by doctors, but not medical ones. And, you know, I think that it is incumbent upon us to follow the guidance that we're given. And, you know, we, I just keep saying that to people, and I know it may be inconvenient, it may, but it is keeping kids healthier, and that's the bottom line. And so I appreciate the explanation. I think if there was some way we could, I know we've done it, but if we could reiterate this to parents, because in the last week to two weeks, I continually have heard from parents who just don't understand the whys and the reasons for what we're doing, the schedule that we're keeping, et cetera. I think a little more communication on this might be in order.
We'll definitely work towards that.
I appreciate that.
And, you know, we continue to lead with, you know, in-person instruction is important, and we know that, and we heard that for over 18 months, and we want to be able to maintain that, and that means having our staff and students healthy. And this is one way to help us do that. Dr. Tigan shared, I think, in the weeks we've been testing now 23 positive cases who, by being identified, didn't then inadvertently expose their teammates, who may have then returned to class and exposed others. And so you can see the transmission rates being high in our community, along with the burden on staffing, you know. So I think everything we can do to keep ourselves reasonably safe and ensure that we can provide in-person instruction is our aim and is our mission. And certainly, we want the athletes to have a productive season, and we saw in fall where there were a number of delays and tournaments and folks unable to participate. We want to keep the teams participating and keep everyone safe.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Ogbon. Ms. Shea.
Ms. Ogbon, I think you cheated off my paper. You covered pretty much exactly everything I wanted to cover, one of which being the second bullet point here. And then can you, and this might be putting you on the spot a little bit, Dr. Tigan, my apologies, but can you, I know it is VDH guidance on the difference between vaccinated individuals and unvaccinated individuals. We hear anecdotally, and I hear a lot in my email feedback, as well as in our written public comment, that vaccinated people can still get and transmit COVID. Can you, do you have any context you can add about why, knowing that, that it's still the guidance that fully vaccinated individuals?
Yeah, I don't think we can speak to why their guidance is what it is, but we certainly follow it and we lean into them. I think that's a great question, and, you know, but that being said, individuals, you know, may choose to participate in the testing even if they have been vaccinated, understanding that anecdotally. Yeah.
Okay. And Dr. Cashwell shared, which I just want to reiterate, did you say 23 positive cases?
I believe that's the number I heard Dr. Tigan share. She can confirm.
So we have 23 positive cases that through Vista testing, we identified that otherwise would have been in practices with students or in class with other students, causing a larger disruption to in-person learning, is what I'm hearing, without the Vista testing, likely.
Right. There are 23 cases that we were able to keep from spreading in the classrooms and across their teammates.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, and just to echo again what Ms. Ogbon said, I think the biggest continued frustration I hear from the parent side is, again, not understanding why we're not testing all athletes. I know all athletes have the option, but it's not at this time required for all athletes. And then from the school side, the biggest frustration I hear, you spoke to earlier, which is ironing out some of these kinks in scheduling. I know they work really hard to have it run as efficiently as possible, so that students are missing less than five minutes of class or lunch or whatever else. And when then the vendor's schedule gets, it just, you know, creates a snowball effect. So do we have, do we have hope, light on the horizon that that will be ameliorated in the coming weeks?
Yes. We hope so. We work closely with the vendor and with the Virginia Department of Health. They've been very responsive. When we think about it, like at the middle school level, this week was only the second time they did it in a school. And so we have seen in, even in the high school level, where they've been doing it longer, that things are running more smoothly, and that, you know, now they're on the fourth time doing it within their school. And so we do believe things will get smoother. Some is on our part and some is on the vendor's part, but we meet regularly to discuss what those challenges are, and when there is an issue, we deal with it immediately that day, and we get, and there's responsiveness. And I hope they feel that when there's issues on our side and they bring them to our attention, that they feel we're responsive to their concerns.
Thank you. Is there, it's my understanding that right now, in terms of reporting out to the schools, it's a no news is good news kind of situation with the tests, is that correct?
For the schools, yes.
Okay.
Because we're trying not to inundate them, and so only positive cases that require contact tracing are shared with the school. But the parents get the results.
Oh, they do, okay.
They get it at the same time that the schools, that we do.
Okay. It might just perhaps be something to consider and have a conversation on just sending the ADs and all-clear on the weeks that they don't have any positive cases, because I know some of them have wondered, is it all clear? Is there a snag in the result? You know, sometimes when you don't hear, you just don't know.
Understood. And we try to, we've tried to communicate, we've sent out additional communication today. If that wasn't, I'll go back and look at that. If that wasn't clear, we'll make sure that we make it clear.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Consala.
Yes, thank you. I would be remiss if I did not thank you and the team for making the consent forms available in many different languages. I'm really grateful for that, as well as providing Dumbarton Elementary, including Dumbarton, in your pilot program for vaccinations. So with that being said, I'd like to better understand, is the process for HVA, student athletes enrolled in our virtual academy, what does that look like, and is that going well for our virtual students?
You mean the overall program?
If we have athletes...
Oh.
They are participating with, they're participating at the team, that's where their residence is, and so they are following the same, you mean for getting them tested even though they're virtual?
Correct. Even though they're virtual, what does that look like, and is that going well?
We haven't, I think we've only heard from one individual, and we've been able to, you know, we've provided that they can participate in their student's school.
Okay.
But we also have testing nearby. You know, we tried to stagger schedules so that it would meet the needs of our families and our staff, regardless if they were virtual students, middle school students, or high school students, or our coaches.
Okay. I appreciate that, because with those student athletes being virtual, and they're not in the building, and I know they're, logistically, in each building, it looks different for the testing, so thank you for that. So just for a point of clarity, I know you mentioned the difference between the AEGIS test and the at-home kits. Is there a difference in the reliability of the result?
Okay, there's, the at-home kits that the Binax Now kits that we send home, they're antigen-based kits, so they are different than the PCR. And like I say, the AEGIS is like PCR on steroids because of looking at three different...
Right.
...aspects. So they are different. There is greater reliability on the PCR, which is what we're doing with our athletes. If you're symptomatic, the Binax Now are fairly, those are, you know, accurate, you know, but they're not considered as accurate as the PCR.
Okay. So, and when our students go to the pediatrician and they get a PCR test done there, because I just know I've heard from some constituents, you're aware, that have gone to their pediatrician perhaps and have gotten a different result. Can you walk us through what that may look like and that, and why the AEGIS test would override even that kind of test from a pediatrician?
The, I would, you know, I don't know necessarily what pediatricians' offices are all doing. My assumption would be that they would be PCR tests, but again, different labs look at different aspects, and so...
And so it's not necessarily comparing apples to apples with results from one lab to the next because of the, what they're actually looking at.
But the AEGIS is the most sophisticated to date, correct?
It is more, it is more specific than most of the, if labs are still doing what they were doing when COVID first came out, the more they know, the, you know, they've been able to change. And AEGIS is using the latest technology to be able to look at multiple areas. So it's helping them look for variants. And that's why they, it's more broad spectrum. I say, we would refer to it as the gold standard.
Okay. Thank you for providing a little bit more detail to that. I've received quite a few questions this week about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Consala. So just quick questions, Dr. Tiggen. So I know that we are already utilizing 75% of our allotment of the 2,500 test kits. So I know that you said that Ms. Gilbert has ordered that. What, how many are we trying to keep on hand? Is there a certain number?
Well, we have, we had a plan that of what we wanted to keep on hand in our schools because of the distribution requirement from the warehouse to the schools when you're delivering to 72 facilities and then central offices. We were trying to maintain a larger pool in our schools. We have not reached that because the kits that were provided to date expire on December 29th. And so we are currently waiting for new test kits to be delivered. And VDH is still waiting to get them. We're in communication with them every day because we know we would like them in-house in our schools before winter break.
Thank you for that. Go to, if you could, to slide, the second slide of the presentation. We talk about the school-level impact. So, I mean, it sums it up. In regards to the transmission impact that we're having on our schools, transmission is moderate, student absenteeism is slightly above baseline, staffing capacity strained. Are we seeing any trends in any schools or any specific districts with staffing challenges and higher student absenteeism? Any trends?
It ebbs and flows, especially around the student and some teacher absenteeism based on COVID. You see ebbs and flows. So there might be times when it's high. You know, we've seen weeks where we've had more outbreaks where, you know, as of this week, we haven't seen any outbreaks. And we hope that continues through tomorrow. And that's really about the spread and the fact that we're not seeing spread within our buildings. And so we have seen, you know, before winter, before Thanksgiving break, things were higher. And we're kind of, while case numbers are up, the spread in our buildings are actually down somewhat as far as when you look at outbreaks. And so, and with staff capacity, it has, it also depends because staff are out for different reasons. Sometimes it may be from an exposure to COVID. Sometimes it could be related to FMLA as far as, you know, if a teacher may be out for some medical reason, then it's, that's separate from COVID, that impacts our staffing levels and so on. You know, finding substitutes is a challenge. And we've worked to address that through putting in additional permanent subs. And so, you know, I can't tell you exactly from school to school or, you know, what those levels are right now. But if, you know, certainly we watch where the needs are and have data to look at where we try to provide additional support to those schools that are having more trouble with staffing levels.
So we just, we're adapting and adjusting to what we're presented within the Evin floor, as you said, of the weekly kind of status of either the division, school, or the area in which the schools are in?
Yes. The Division of School Leadership has done a good job of keeping us abreast of where additional needs are and, you know, getting some of those of us in central office to help support those schools.
Thank you so much. And the last question is, how are you perceiving a level of compliance with the testing, the weekly testing? It's just, what's just anecdotally speaking? And is there any kind of penalty if we don't hit certain expected numbers?
As far as testing the winter athletes? You know, no, there's no penalty. We've had relatively consistent, I mean, we, participation, it does vary some from week to week based on if a student, you know, is out for quarantine, they're not coming in to be tested. So that number can change some. And of course, our number changed when we went from just high school athletes to adding the middle school athletes. But, you know, the athletes themselves, the teams are set. So, you know, the coaches are hired, and so that isn't really changing. It's just other things that may impact it.
Sure. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jen.
All right. Well, no more questions for Health Committee. And we appreciate the presentation as well as the biology lesson. And as always, your dedication and the Health Committee's work on this ever-expanding topic. So we appreciate your work on that.